Good afternoon. It is 4:38 on Tuesday, July 15th, and we are having a policy committee meeting for the National Board of Education here in the Nashville North Boardroom at a unique time, which is why we are all discombobulated. So I'm calling it 4:38. I'm here. We have Ms. Lampier here. So we have a quorum. Mr. Johnson is on his way. We also have Mr. Poska. We have Dr. Andre. And we have some teachers and administrators in the audience who are welcome to sit at the U with us, or they can stay in the audience. If you come up, I will ask you to say your name for the record. I know almost everybody's names, but maybe not every single person. Sorry. Okay. Oh, and I'm sorry, Dr. Scarpetti is here, too. Yay! Didn't see you. Okay. And we also have one of our student board members, Mr. Shray Shah. And Mr. Ahmed did email me to let me know that he wanted to be here, but he has to work this afternoon, so I will keep my eyes open for an email from him. So that's where we're at. So I think everybody is here for the student use of personal electronic communications policy and not the random board member authority policies that are also on the agenda tonight. So just to give everybody an update, the governor signed the New Hampshire's state budget two weeks ago now, and included in the budget was a--some policy updates and language regarding personal electronic communication devices in schools. And so the language that was signed by the governor bans all personal communication devices from the opening bell of the day to the closing bell of the day at all public and charter schools in the state without exceptions for instructional use. The only exceptions are for medical usage or other uses protected under IEPs, 504s, or English Language Learning. And those programs that are pursuant to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. So I know that Nashville has been working on a policy for quite some time. Last month, Mr. Freeman came and spoke to us about what the teachers had been using, had been working on. And this month, in the packet, we have a proposal from administration. And then Mr. Poska also has handed out--the School Board Association came up with a proposed policy yesterday. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So do you want to dive in?
Sure. I'd like to. I think we should probably start with the--although we gave it a solid effort to create our own policy, I think the policy that was presented to--from the NHSBA has some more information in there. You know, I think at this point, we are still in, you know, making some recommendations here based upon this. I think we have people here who may be, you know, as we talked about before, and specifically at the high school level, there's concerns about the shift in practice that this is going to bring with it, as this is a ban from the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day. There are certainly concerns about passing times and enforcement, as well as in lunch and things of that nature. The policy, JICJ, does go into great lengths to talk about their proposal. I did give members of the audience, who are here, copies of the proposed policy from the New Hampshire School Board Association, so they can see that, you know, how it slightly differs from what we have, probably just a little bit more expansive than what we had created to present as a working draft. But I think it's a--certainly, it's a first start, and I think as we go forward and things we've talked about, not only at our working group meeting last month, but also over the course of the year, as we work through this with a group of administrators and teachers, is kind of addressing this as a, you know, as a practice. We really--we don't want to be disciplining students for utilization or for accessing their cell phones. I think this is more or less addressing the concerns, or, you know, what we talked about is protecting the classroom environment and the learning environment, so that teachers can do what they need to do and the students can need to do what they need to do. And there are students, and I think we looked at this as, you know, an increase in the use of, you know, social media and their cell phones as an addiction, and how are we going to kind of work with the students and families to address this going forward? The last thing we want is students missing instructional time based upon this, as we talked about, you know, just, you know, just as I just mentioned, our goal was to protect the classroom environment, and we need students in that classroom or environment engaged with the learning process in order for that to happen. So I think that's what we're all here to talk about and what we're all geared to promote. In my conversations with several of the administrators at the high school, they've expressed that, you know, they understand that this is a law and its enforcement. It's an idea of making sure we communicate this to all the students and families as we go forward, but certainly, there's going to be an adjustment period as we start the school year, but we want to make sure everyone is on the same page as we go forward with some of these changes that are coming up.
All right. I don't know why that didn't press on. Go ahead, Ms. Lampier.
So just reading through the New Hampshire School Board Association policy, they have consequences and violations that are a little bit stricter than what we were thinking of. I didn't know if this is--is this--is this kind of consequence spelled out in the law? Or is this something that we can still do our own thing with?
I still think we have some leeway, I mean, again, the recommendations for the consequences. You know, one of the things that I think we're concerned about is confiscation of phones. You know, like, the last thing we want is for teachers and administrators to be confiscating phones. You know, that's going to be a challenge for all of us, and once that happens, I think we need to literally loop in the families for what that is. So that is a concern off the bat of addressing that. We don't, you know, I don't think teachers got into this profession to be confiscating phones, and I know administrators in the industry are in this profession to be confiscating phones.
Yeah.
But we are, you know, in the profession to kind of make sure we're promoting learning, and how can we do that together to make sure we are continuing to allow for the best learning environment possible for our students?
Okay. So as I was reading the School Board Association sample policy last night, I kind of set them side by side, right, to look at how ours compared and what we did differently and what they did differently, and which I thought was better. And I think that personally, as I was reading them, I feel like we need to merge them as opposed to adopting one or the other. And obviously, I will, at the end of the day, you know, really follow the guidelines that administration has laid out, because you guys are the ones having to enforce it. But there are some things in each section that I thought that the lovely attorneys up at the School Board Association put very nicely. Like, for example, I like the reason why, like, the reason under purpose that they have in there. And then, you know, really defining the difference between district-owned versus personal. And I like their definition as well. It's a non-district-provided internet cellular-capable device, and then all of the things that it can support. I know when Mr. Poska and I were sitting down with the one that had come from administration, we were trying to, like, figure out how to define all of the devices that this may apply to, and I think that this hits it in a way that we didn't get to, which is good. The other thing I really like at the beginning of the School Board Association policy is that they added extracurricular, co-curricular, and then they were very clear that no matter what circumstances, part of the prohibition is to protect the privacy of other students. And I think that, and I would imagine staff as well, but especially other students. And I think that that, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't include that in our final policy. But I like our consequences better.
And I think, you know, one of the pieces that has come up in, you know, hearing back from some of the administrators is the communication aspect of that, and the idea of, you know, if there's a concern in the classroom, I think it should always start with a teacher, a teacher communicating those concerns home. I think it's, this is going to be a challenge, and I think if, how are we going to collaborate together with teachers, you know, when I say, you know, with teachers and with administrators to make sure that message is sent to parents about what is occurring in the classroom? And again, I think to put all that onus, you know, all on the administrators would be a challenge based upon some of the things. So I think we need to have, you know, some collaborative efforts in making sure that communication gets back to the parents, what's going on. You know, I think, you know, as we get into this, I think that, you know, obviously, I know Shray is, you know, has spoken about this before and has some ideas and some feelings, and I appreciate that. You know, this is going to be a change. The reality is, this is a law. Whether or not we like it or not, it's a law that we have to, you know, have to follow, you know, and we have to do it together. And I think communicating that out to the students and families is so very, very important. I know we have, you know, members from, you know, the middle school, and I've heard from elementary principals, as well as some of the concerns that have come up. So I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure we understand that this is a K-12 policy and law that we need to follow, but I think the major impact is going to be, you know, the brunt of the impact to start the school year is going to be at the high school as we deal with some of these changes.
Right. I think our handbooks have been clear for quite some time that at the elementary school and the middle school, this was kind of already the practice that they were prohibited. Although I didn't know about, like, Apple-style watches that elementary school kids were wearing. I had no idea that was a thing, so I have my own blinders because of my children's age.
Ms. Raymond, before you phrase me, I just want to, we do, as we try to facilitate this conversation, there is a finance and operations meeting at 6 o'clock this evening, so I just want to make sure we're--
So we're on a timeline.
--at time.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll have Shray speak, and then I think we should just go through the policy part by part and pick which ones, whether we want ours, the School Board Association, or emerging.
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick point of order. Is, if the teacher allows the cellphone or the personal device use in class, is that allowed?
No, it is not. So there was a bill, 781, that would have allowed that, but the governor vetoed it on the 7th. So this is the, this is the language that was in HB2.
Oh, yeah, I read it.
Does this regard, like, Shray and a lot of the other kids, you bring their own laptops? They can't do that anymore either, right? No.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. No. And I've spoken to some board members from other districts, like Merrimack, for example, did this last year, and their policy is that all devices have to be powered down in backpacks or lockers as soon as school starts. And I get that, but as a parent who, of kids who have devices, I would not want to lose the "find my iPhone" feature, which happens when you turn everything off. However, if my kid's having a problem where their device is going off and being interrupting, I would like to get a call so that I can address it as a parent, right?
Correct.
Because you can't be disruptive in class. So let's look at the two together. Under purpose, I personally like the language that the School Board Association suggests for a purpose. Does anyone feel differently?
I would just add to that.
Okay.
Because it's not only about distraction-free.
Yep.
So we've, more and more research is coming on what is the addiction to cell phones and social media doing. So this is a mental health issue as much as an engagement issue or putting your phone away. So I just want to be, right, like, careful on, you know, the research coming out, the kids', like, brains are being hardwired in a different way, so this is also mental health and just not a punitive "put your cellphone away," right? So, and as we kind of go through the policy, when we get into consequences, you know, how you address certain issues might differ student to student depending on some mental health issues.
I agree.
I think we need to be really careful on, yes, this is the state law, yes, you need to put it away, and how we address each situation might differ depending on the student in front of us.
I think it's, I think that's a fair statement, and I certainly think that there will be students who need significant support, and there will be students who are, you know, adjust quickly. So do you have specific language that you would add under purpose? Because it says, "The district is committed to providing students with a learning environment free from disruptions." And then it talks about what the communication devices are, lead to disruptions in the learning environment for individual students in the classroom. Would you put--
So I think our policy, where it says the intent is to support engaging distraction-free learning, while honor and student needs related to health, I think, like, the NHSBA does not mention health.
So I think I would put, "The district is committed to providing students with an engaging and distraction-free," right? I think I would, I would edit that, and then, oh, I don't know how I would write that. I think I would steal our whole intent is to support and put that as the first line. And then the second line would be the use of it. Would that--
I like that last sentence from ours, and to add that, whether it be to start or after disruptions, I think would be appropriate.
I like it at the beginning.
That's fine.
I think I would still write the district-- Just, hold on, I can't spell "district."
Does the purpose really matter?
Yes. Yeah, because it explains why we're putting the policy in. I think in practice, it doesn't, but it sets the tone for why we're doing this.
Okay.
Because I think, I don't, I think sometimes if I'm just reading it as, "This is the rule, and here's the consequence," that makes sense for a knife or a vape pen. It doesn't necessarily make sense for a device that someone is struggling to put away. I mean, even with a vape, like, you would think that there are going to be students who need referrals and need supports to not engage in that behavior. I'm going to write, "The district is committed to supporting," and then, "an engaging and distraction-free learning environment," from ours. And then, hopefully, Tare or Gail can remember this when they're listening to the thing. And I will send her an email with all this typed up nicely. Okay. Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming. Mr. Johnson, I don't know what time he arrived. I'm going to say 10:00, 4:50. Yay!
Good enough.
So we, the New Hampshire School Board Association issued this policy yesterday, and we're kind of comparing it to the one that the district has come up with to meld the two together and come up with something that works for our district. Okay. Do we like the definition that they have?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need the scope? Because we have after-purpose scope. The policy applies to K-12, or is that just understood?
I mean, it is a K to, I mean, restating isn't the worst thing in the world, but that is what the law states. So whether we add it in the purpose to K-12 or just add that line of scope, I think it just reiterates the, restates what is already out there. Let's keep it.
Okay. So we'll do, we'll add scope in there from the Nashville policy.
I know it may seem odd, but should it be pre-K through 12?
Yes, it should. Great. And then, we have policy statement. They have restrictions. I don't, and then, we do general probation, and then exceptions under policy statement. I don't really care. I hate to use that word.
I think we can skip past the exceptions. I think they're pretty understood.
Right.
No?
Well, I could start with restrictions first, wherever it is. I think we should keep the restrictions as it is, as it, I think one of the things, as Ms. Raymond pointed out earlier, there's restrictions to some of the co-curricular activities that I think we did not note before, that probably should there, although, so I think we should keep that in, just because it is an addition that we did not discuss previously.
So I'm just formatting language. Are we going to use the word restrictions?
Yes, I think it keeps it consistent with the policies.
Great. And then, I personally like the language they have here. I also like the, I like paragraph one, paragraph two, paragraph three regarding, "The district is responsible for providing district-owned devices." I don't know about paragraph four, which says, "While it's best practice that these devices are not brought to school, if they are brought to school, they should be kept with the power turned off in a student's locker, backpack, or handbag." I do like, "The district will not be responsible for lost, damage, or theft of any electronic communication device."
I mean, I think as we get into this, I think, you know, most of the students, you know, again, with, you know, whether it be at the high school level, they're trying to have some type of backpack or purse that someone might be carrying, so they might be there. I don't think lockers are used on a widespread basis at the high schools, but they are used on a widespread basis, more of a widespread basis at the middle school level. So I think keeping that paragraph in, you know, as pointed out as a pre-K to 12, and how they utilize it at the elementary school with their cubbies and putting their backpacks of their belongings in their cubbies, that's where it should belong. So I think it's appropriate to keep that statement in there, because at this point, we are not looking to purchase any of the Yonger bags or anything like that.
And I don't think we should. My mom quibble is the powered off versus on silent mode. I just think that that's a really dumb hill to die on for our staff to be fighting with parents over. I think if it's going off and it's being disruptive, absolutely, hey, you've got to turn your cellphone off. But I think there's a, I think that that, I just think it's too restrictive, but--
Yeah, I agree. Like, the silent mode, you know, ringer turned off, more so than powered off, especially sometimes, I know, with powering off your phone, it may take a while to reconnect to the internet or the Wi-Fi, and then, you know, people who have, kids who have activities after school may have trouble reconnecting their phone when they turn it back on after school's done.
And for me, it's the "find my iPhone," right?
Yeah.
If the phone falls out of the backpack or whatever, I can't--
Right. You can't find it. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so silent mode or ringer, ringer off, silent mode.
So devil's advocate.
Yeah, well, that's why we're here, right?
So I wear a smartwatch, and I know in here, like, I'm not policing people's smartwatches either, right? Like, everyone going down, like, hey, get, don't wear an Apple Watch, you know, go get a Timex, right? But if your phone is not powered off, I'm still getting messages on my watch. And so I understand, and so I think there's going to be a fine line on here, and so, Shray, I know you like, do we have to include things? I think we need to be a little more explicit at the beginning on expectations, and some of it might be for the adults. Like, yeah, the phone should be powered off. Your kid's in school, right? Because now you have a classroom teacher, a kid is now checking his watch, that's the distraction, they're not doing their phone, so I don't think, again, it's going to come back down to the enforcement at the end of the day. What are we trying to do?
Right.
Distraction-free, engaged learning environment, right? And then, cutting kids off from the immediate gratification of a like or a social media point, right, or post. So what's the mental health on that? Some of it is going to be, how do we handle it in school? And some of this policy is actually new habits for the adults.
100%.
Right.
We're going to need to do some outreach and some support for parents.
Right. And so, yes, we're going to have a parent hat on, but we're also, what's the enforcement in school, and what's that break, or what's the support for the adults in the community of who wants to know where their child is at all times, right?
Well, I think that--
And that's--
That's what I'm hearing from parents at the elementary school level, that they want to be able to geolocate their child walking to and coming home from school.
Which they can with this policy. When they get into the school, from bell to bell--
Right. They turn it off when they get to school, they turn it back on, right?
Right, when they, after the bell.
Yeah, they turn it back on at the end of the day before the kids walk home.
Correct. So if that's the concern, right, then it's, just, your child got to school safely, turn the phone off. And again, we really don't have much of an issue with K-8.
Right.
The change of behavior is going to be 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old young men and women.
Yeah.
So that's, I think there's going to be a communication aspect of this, but again, what's the intent on here? And again, what's the role of the teacher, the administrator on breaking some adult habits? And what is the intent, right? It's not just, students are not disengaged anymore, right? It's, like, cell phones are changing, like, the brain research coming out is--
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot more than, kids are not paying attention in class.
100% agree.
So where do we need to get to? And then, what's the communication around the adults to say, yes, your son or daughter is safe in school, and how do we enforce it? So I would keep it in there, and it's going to come down to, at that point, of that level of consequences, is if I see someone's always checking their watch, it might be, hey, Heather, make sure everything's off, please, thank you, before we get to the next level, right? And that's going to be, you know, the consequence of, if the student is distracted, their phone's on, now you're having a different conversation.
Thoughts, panel?
Yeah, I see that as a necessity, and I also see this, you know, again, parent hat, the concern of, you know, I mean, I know with my kids, I've had times where they may be in school, but they may have left school, you know, and I may know that because I can see they've left the school, whereas, phone's off, you have no, and I know, it's a habit that we now have, that we sort of have to bring back.
And I hate to say it, if a parent is really concerned, there's ear tags that you can track--
That's true.
Like, there's other devices if you want to track your kid.
My son has it on his car keys, because they have a tendency to disappear.
Or leave them some. But there's other devices than your phone if you're that parent who wants to know where your child is every second, that may or may not be related to the cellphone policy.
Okay.
And that's a, yeah.
All right.
Different conversation.
And part of this policy, part of the requirement of the law is that we review the policy on an annual basis. So I almost see this as a thing where we're going to have to check in, right? And even before a year gets up, I see the board wanting to be like, hey, how's it going a couple of ti, in the fall, in the winter? Like, are people adjusting? Is our policy working?
Yep.
That kind of thing. And any other thoughts?
I know. I think, from what Dr. Andre just said, I agree with what he said, and it's probably best to start with that clean cut, especially if the, if the phone is turned off in the backpack and someone's getting, they're less likely to get those updates on their, on their watch. And policing a watch is going to be a lot harder than policing a phone, because it's, you know--
Right. I don't really love the idea of making kids take their watch off and hide it somewhere. Like, I just feel like that's so much easier to lose or misplace or whatever than putting your phone in your bag. And I would prefer us not get there. So, Shray?
Yes. We're talking about the silent mode versus powered off right now, right?
Right. And right now, it sounds like we're leaning towards powered off.
Okay. Can we define the differences between those two real quick? Because if powered off just means, I take my phone and I click it like this, it's off.
No.
No. Off all the way.
Or you mean, I click it multiple times and I slide the power off?
You slide the power off button.
No. I'm in favor of locked, so I just click the button once and it's away.
Silent and locked. So that's the difference, right? It's the difference of being able to, because on power off, I think my, my smartwatch is still paying attention to my step-- It's the difference of being able to, because on power off, I think my, my smartwatch is still paying attention to my steps and my fall detection is still on, which is why I have one because I've had strokes. But I can't make a phone call on it, right?
Aren't we supposed to?
You can. Well, if your phone's off, you're saying you can't make the phone call.
I mean, the fact is, is that a lot of kids will probably just put their phone on silent. But at least we're starting off.
We're making with the policy.
But, but the aspect at the end of the day is what are we trying to accomplish? Right? What, at the, how do we know in a year from now, when we're reviewing this? So we want to say at the high school level, our students are more engaged, right? There's less distractions. So what are we measuring as opposed to how many students did Mr. Richards give detention to because of the cell phone?
Right.
Did it started at like fifteen hundred in September and now we're down to eight hundred in, in May? Is that a win? Or are we talking Mr. Freeman saying, hey, listen, we have a new policy. And I saw the level of respect go up. The kids were respectful when I said, hey, turn this off. There was less distractions. There was more engagement. Student achievement went up. That's what we want to accomplish.
Right.
Right? Students aren't feeling the anxiety and the peer pressure of checking social media every seventy-five seconds. Those are the things that I think we have to keep in mind. What does success look like? Student engagement, lower anxiety, right? That aspect as opposed to how many kids did we throw out of class and get suspended over this? So I, I think that's the why and like the purpose behind it is getting back to higher student engagement, student ownership, student empowerment, and blending that aspect of how are they twenty twenty-five student, engaged student, like learners using technology appropriately. And so I think those are the outcomes that we need to measure, student engagement. So yeah, power off, whatever you're doing, but you're not being combative to a teacher when they say, hey, don't forget to turn it off.
Yeah.
Because it leads to other things.
Yeah, the only reason why I say I like locked better than powered off or silent mode is because I feel like if the phone is going to be in the bag anyways, if the watch is going to be in the bag anyways, who is going to take the time to check that your phone is silent or their phone is like fully powered off? I just feel like it's, it's just unrealistic in my opinion.
I think my hope is that we do not have random phone checks, right? Like, that just seems unnecessarily petty unless we're having a problem with phones, right? Like, I think that, I don't think any, oh, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I have, I have difficulty imagining that teachers would enjoy that.
Like, if your bag starts ringing, then we know, you know.
Then we know that you're not following the rules.
Tell you to turn your phone off.
That's a vastly significant different scenario there. I think the teachers and the administrators have far more to do than to have bag checks or cell phone checks. So I think we can move forward from there. I think that's.
It's when it occurs that it's addressed.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind silent. Silence, fine to me because that's also just one button. It's okay.
But what we have written here is powered off. We're going to leave it. And we'll see what the community says at the school board meeting on Monday.
I had a feeling this meeting would go this way.
All right. The next one is exceptions. This is exactly what it says in the law, pretty much verbatim. That if you have specific medical needs or disabilities that require the device, or if you are a multilingual student, you can have your cell phone for those particular uses. It also says that the superintendent has, or their designated, has the ability to approve additional exceptions on a case-by-case basis. But those should be based on medical disability or language needs. I'm thinking of some of our concussion protocols, you know, or if we have a, a student who's like me and needs the fall warning, right? But maybe it's a temporary thing, not. And I will, I, I like this language. I like leaving it up to administration to figure that out and not us.
I agree.
That, like, I just don't want to wade into that stuff. But I, I like the fact that it is giving an out for someone who maybe doesn't have a five oh four yet because we know that there are acute situations. The other thing I like about this policy going back one step is it talks about how in no event can any of them be used to record things or violate people's privacy. So even those, those students who have a documented use for it, they still cannot be using them to violate people's privacy, which is helpful. So now we're on to consequences, which they have D, we have four. I like that they have in their first line, no audio or video of taking pictures of students or staff. That is already state law, not that anyone has been following it forever, but it's very clearly in state law that you can't record people unless you're like out on the street. But in a, in a building, you can't do it without their permission. And I know it happens a lot. And then it says consequences will be pursuant to the student code of conduct. We do have a section in JIC that talks about inappropriate use of cell phones. So I think we can fill JIC. And then they have first offense, second offense, which is different and stricter than the three guidelines that we had put in the NASHWA policy. I like NASHWA's better.
I agree with ours.
Mr. Shaw?
I don't think splitting it up into first offense and then second and other offenses is as simple as it really is, in my opinion. I feel like there's different levels of this. Someone can just be playing a game on their phone in class blatantly disrespecting their teacher. That's one thing. But simply checking your phone while E-bloc's going on for like a second? I don't, I think there need, we need to differentiate between that. I think we need to differentiate between in-class learning and out-of-class learning for the offenses.
So that's actually something that Mr. Poska and I talked about last week when we were looking at it. We looked at what Manchester had as well for their, because they have like four or five different levels and it was very prescriptive. And I think that it's reasonable to say in a respectful way to each other, hey, Mr. Shaw, put your phone away. I know it's E-bloc, but you're not allowed to have it. As long as it's not an everyday thing. Like, I don't think that there's any student that needs to be told in every single block that they need to put their phone away. And I don't think it's reasonable to ask our teachers to do that every day in every single class, right? And if, if I'm in class with you and I hear the teacher tell you to put it away, then I've also heard that and I know that I probably shouldn't have it out. So the teacher doesn't need to be telling thirteen students to put it away every period.
So I think to Ms., Mr. Shaw's point though, is that the way the policy is written is bell to bell. So E-bloc is bell to bell. So there should be no cell phones in E-bloc. And so that needs to be consistent. So it can't be teacher A is allowing kids to use it in, in one class and teacher B is saying no. So, or there's a group of students saying, I think this policy is stupid and I'm going to use my phone anyways, right? And so that's some of the communication that we need to be consistent with it. And then to Ms. Raymond's point, it's a matter of, or Mr. Johnson, it's a matter, matter of mutual respect. Hey, Heather, can you put your phone away, please? Thank you. Have a good day. And the student to put the phone away with a reminder. And it should be over at that point, right? And so it shouldn't happen every day, but that's the, the mutual respect back and forth. If a student says, I'm not putting my phone away, you can't take my phone, it's not going to be about the phone anymore. You're going to get into different type of insubordination, disrespect, I'm sure some profanity and other consequences.
Right. So that's, that's kind of what I like about our, the NASHWA proposal versus the School Board Association because I think it starts with that mutual, the expectation of mutual respect as opposed to the punitive, give me the phone and we're now engaged in, you know, perhaps a power struggle and we're taking further time away from class.
And the other aspect is around the confiscation because we talk about the parent hat. So we just, for round numbers, we're talking about a thousand-dollar device. And there will be some families out there saying, I don't care who's saying they're taking your phone, don't give up your phone.
Yep.
Right? And so the student is now in a pickle between do I listen to the building principal, my teacher, or my mother?
I don't want to put anybody in that position.
And so what's going to end up happening is that the student's going to, you know, obey their parent, which is fine, which they should. But now we're going to end up in a situation where the phone is not consec, like confiscated and the student's probably going to end up going home for the day, which is a loss of learning. So step one with confiscation is not that easy.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't like it. Go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
I just have a question about kids with disabilities and IEP plans and stuff. Are you going to start to make it a habit? If a child finds like a, like a tablet or something pretty much necessary during the day, will you make sure that it's written into the IEP plan?
It should be in.
It should already be.
It should be there already.
Yeah, my, my son had it in his IEP that he could use his phone in class for, for spelling. So it was in his IEP that he could do it.
I, I think we have quite a few students who use the continuous glucose monitoring, right? And so they would need to be able to get those alerts during the day to manage their, their health needs.
In, in an aspect, again, where in an IEP, there should be data of why you're using it. It's a language disability.
I just feel like kids that have, you know, documented behavioral problems, that would be very difficult to take something away from them. It might get really hairy for the, the teacher or whatever.
Or the other aspect is, you know, go the other way is that a family may ask for a five oh four in IEP in order to allow, right? But there might not be any documentation or medical or educational purpose behind it. But they might try to use an IEP or a five oh four to get that accommodation so that they can feel comfortable that their child has their phone and they can monitor them.
So does anyone have objections to us taking the language from the NASHWA proposal and using it under, keeping, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Keeping paragraph one, students are not permitted to make video recordings. Keeping paragraph two, consequences are pursuant to JIC. And then additionally, and then replacing their first offense, second offense with what we have, which is first subsequent.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Ms. Raymond, one of the things that's come up from my conversations with administrators is even within first offense, asking if we could get more communication home from the class, from teacher to the, to the parents regarding what happened in the class. So I'll pick on Shray. Shray's in my history class.
Shray.
He's got his, he's got his phone out. I say, Shray, you need to put that phone away. Shray complies, you know? But then a follow-up message, you know, you know, Mr. Poska then, you know, document home, hey, Mr. Shaw, just let me know. I had to ask Shray to put his phone away. He was able to do that in, in only man, I just wanted to make, let you know. So I think that, you know, as we talked about the communication on a regular basis, this has happened. It has to happen because, you know, if it gets to the next level and we're, you know, something more significant happens, now it's a surprise to Mr. and Mrs. Shaw and that's not, that's not fair. And I don't think it's fair of the administrators to put them into the position where now they're kind of addressing this issue when it's been occurring and, you know, Shray knew it, the teacher knew it, but Mr. and Mrs. Shaw didn't know it. So that was a concern, you know, a question is if we could put some more communication into that piece at that time.
So the, our says, the first offense, the student will be told to, to put their electronic device away. And then it says like not daily and not all the time. And then it says subsequent official offenses, the teacher staff may notify the parent. Do you want the, in this policy for it to say, under the first one as well, you know, teachers may notify the parent?
Or maybe the subsequent should be will, like instead of may, it will, they will be notified?
Right. Like, do you want it, yeah, to change it to subsequent to will? Or do you also want to add that to the first offense? Because I'm leery of adding stuff to teachers' plates that they must do in a big P policy as opposed to your internal guidelines that you have with your teachers, right? Like, it's our expectation that you talk to parents.
No, I, I, I think that's some of the things we talked about. And I think when we kind of talked about subsequent offenses, keeping it broad enough so that the administrators could go down whatever path was appropriate based upon the situation they're dealing with with the student, you know? So I, I, you know, I think as we go there, I think I still wanted to keep it broad. And when we did that, based upon what was needed. But again, to say, you know, you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Johnson, may or will. I wanted to have some flexibility there for, for that piece going forward for our administrators as well. But again, I think it's, you know, one of the things we've, we've often talked about is it starts at the classroom. You know, that teacher-student relationship is so important. And I think that does help to kind of support and accentuate that relationship there going forward as opposed to, you know, the first time I heard from him was, you know, this was a surprise to me. I want to take surprise out of play.
I support having parent communication on the second and subsequent, subsequent offenses. I don't like it on the first time you've used it because I feel like that's just, again, a quick, like Dr. Andre said, just a quick, put your phone away, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Lepre.
So I'm wondering if it's administrators that are asking for this to be sent on the first offense or if it's teachers? Because I'm also wondering who would be responsible for sending it on the first offense? Because it will probably end up being a considerable amount of work. But of course, it also gives you, gives the parents the warning that this might be a problem in the future. It's probably better for them to get that notice as soon as possible. So I don't, I don't know what, what is the, was it administrators or teachers that are asking, that are asking?
Well, I think the concern is to try to take that surprise out of play, like, you know, if this has been going on, you know, but the teacher, again, just trying to follow the policy, has addressed it and Shray has continued to comply, but I've had to continue to ask Shray to do this. You know, we've also said this shouldn't be a, you know, habitual offender continuation. So, you know, again, putting my parent hat on, well, if you had told me four times ago that this happened, I would have addressed it at home, but now here we are.
Right. So, so if it's, if it's the admin, I'm wondering if it's the administrators that are asking? Is it the administrators that will be responsible for sending that notification?
Well, I think at some point it is going to get into the administrator's hands.
Like for the first offense?
Yeah, I guess we're, I'm hung up.
I think, I think it would be appropriate to keep it out of the administrator's hands in the first offense, but subsequent offenses are then going to the administrator's.
So the first offense would be the teachers that would notify the parents?
I think that should be the first line and then it allows them to build some rapport. The teacher's part of the classroom management process. If that, you know, again, if it's a habitual offender, then the administrators are going to be getting involved.
Would that be, would that be, would you like to have it put in as a may or as a will?
For the subsequent offenses?
For the first offense. We're still talking about the first offense line.
I, I think it should be will.
Okay.
You know, to try to accent, to try to increase that communication. You know, I think we're trying to address it at that level because again, at the end of the day, want to work with families, want to protect that learning environment, it starts there. You know, if the administrators are coming in, there's probably a more significant issue.
Yeah. And also, I mean, it's part of the, the problem too is that because this is a law, this is something that the teachers aren't really going to have a lot of leeway with. They have to enforce it. So to give them that note, to give them that contact with the parents the very first time, that seems like it's something that's going to back them up and make it easier for them.
I guess just to push back a little bit, I don't see us saying to teachers, you will send an email home, you know, every single time a child is not paying attention in class, right? Because that to me is really what the issue here, right? The issue is you're using the phone instead of paying attention. But we're not, I'm not getting an email home that my daughter was caught passing a note or chatting with her friend when she was supposed to be paying attention to the lesson. The teacher is saying, hey, pay attention to the lesson. And then if it happens, if it becomes a pattern of behavior, then the teacher reaches out to me and says, hey, you know, your daughter's not paying attention in biology. And then I, and then I parent her. But I don't necessarily need to know that on Tuesday, there was drama happening that took two seconds out and she had to be redirected.
I mean, I just think going forward to help the, you know, again, two parties here. The, the teachers want to protect the learning environment. We want to support the students based upon what their behavior. Again, as we've talked about before, you know, I also agree about the confiscation, you know, not in favor of confiscation. However, developing plans with students, particularly again, at all levels, it might be that, you know, if Shray's in grade seven, his plan might be that when he comes into school in the day, he's giving his phone to Dr. Spazza because he, he needs that out of his way so we can focus on it. At the end of the day, he's going to see Dr. Spazza to get the phone back and that's the plan that's in place.
Right, but that's subsequent offenses. That's not because Shray forgot to turn off his phone one Tuesday.
Correct. But I think it's also about, we probably had all those offenses before, but now we're at the plan. And I think it's about everyone being part of that conversation with going on and supporting that conversation. And it does start, you're absolutely right, it does start with the first offense, but then plans are developed going forward.
So I think, if I may, just, just to clarify, first offense. So I think, if I may, just to clarify, first offense, I think this is where it might be some compromise. Hey, Heather, put your phone away. And you put your phone away and you comply. There's probably nothing happening from there. May or may not be an email home. If it's leading to something more significant from that.
Then email.
So that, then an email should go. But if it's just a warning at the beginning and nothing's happening, there might not be an email. But if I have to remind you on a daily basis, then I think it's, you know, that subsequent aspect should be an email from the teacher first. And then if it's getting escalated to the building principal, it could be a follow-up there. But the first warning, it's not that much of a distraction. It might not be an email home. But I think a teacher needs to use their professional discretion too to say, hey, listen, I'm just going to reach out to the Raymond family just in case anyways, but it's not in there. So first offense may or may not be an email. Second, subsequent should be an email from a teacher, and then it's getting escalated to the building principal. It shouldn't be the building administration sending out 1,700 emails the first week of school.
Should we add a first offense, then a second offense, then subsequent?
So we have first offense.
We have first offense and subsequent.
And then subsequent offense. I kind of feel like what Dr. Andre just said is we change may to will at that point.
Well, I was even thinking putting a second offense in there. So first offense is just the warning. Second offense is the message, email home. And then third offense, and then subsequent, we go with what we have there.
Mr. Shaw.
I don't like on the first offense how teachers could email your parents if it's the first time you're using your phone. I mean, you talk about wanting to build respect with the students. How is it respectful to me as a student if on the first time I bring my phone out in class, you tell me to put it away, I put it away? And right over that, you go directly over my head and tell my parents about it? I just find that disrespectful.
So if I can just add, so why is it a negative email going home? As opposed to say, hey, Mrs. Shaw, I want to let you know how respectful your son was today in class? Is that a bad email?
No.
No.
How would your, how would your parents receive that? Because I got to tell you, if I got an email home saying that Ben had his phone out and he was very nice and put it away, the very first words out of my mouth would be like, why did you have your phone out in class? It wouldn't be, good job listening to your teacher. It would be, why did you break the rule in the first place?
Which is a.
It's embarrassing for me.
And my parents would say the same thing. I just feel like, okay, if I've been using my phone over and over again on a daily basis, tell my parents, I agree with the will on the second or second and subsequent offenses. I get that. On the first offense, I feel like it's harsh to just directly go and just tell on me, like.
But this means if a teacher comes in, if you come in the first day and the teacher says, if you take your cell phone out on the first time, I'm going to send a letter home to your parents, then you wouldn't take it out even once, right?
So in your case, your parents shouldn't get any emails because you know of all this. So you're a bad example.
All right. I kind of like Mr. Johnson's suggestion where we add a second offense in between first and second.
Yeah, I agree with that. Second and subsequent.
Shray's already moving into passing, so.
Right. First offense, student will be directed by teacher staff to put away their phone. The teacher will not remind the student daily, and the student is expected to comply. I'm just giving words. Second offense, teacher staff will notify the parent guardian. And then subsequent offenses, the teacher staff will notify parent guardian. Repeated offenses, the student may be sent to the principal's, assistant principal's office to discuss the offense, notify the parent guardian and make a plan. The device might be confiscated by administration for the parent guardian to pick up. So that's like a, the parent may be notified for this, say it's the third time, right? Parent may be notified, but also the teacher may say, go down to the office. And then the office can contact the parents and plans can be made for how to handle it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I think it gives the, at that point, gives the administration and the teachers an opportunity to develop that plan going forward. I think there's a couple pathways it can go down based upon what they're dealing with and develop that plan.
Okay, because I like the idea of minimizing sending the kid out of the classroom because we want them to be in the classroom learning. But I also like the idea of having somebody in administration making a plan with the parent for what to do with the phone instead of having our teachers put it in a desk. Like, I just, I worry about a phone with a damaged screen and a parent being like, oh, no, you did that, right? And us having no idea where the, you know, where the damage came from. And then the last one is repeated violations may result in progressive disciplinary action consistent with the district's code of conduct, which is JIC, which basically says it's a class three offense. But if you have a number of class three offenses, there's increased stuff. But I, my hope is that we would be able to make a behavior plan with the parent, right? To help support the student before it gets to that point. I never want to hear about a kid getting suspended because of a cell phone, unless the cell phone's being used badly, but not just for having it.
So if I may bring it back for a minute, when we're talking about talking to the parents, for the first offense, it's no need. For the second offense, it's you may. And for subsequent offenses, it's you will. And if it's even more than that, it's administration will. That, my understanding of that is correct, right?
That's what we just said. I will put a caveat on there that any teacher can communicate with any parent at any time they feel that they need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that line, yeah. I agree with that.
Okay.
Can we talk real quick about the confiscation?
Yeah.
So I understand that on this board, there was a lot of concern about the phone being broken in teachers' hands or its parents allowing their phones to get confiscated, stuff like that. I did a lot of research on this at my house. And all schools have a shoe tree. So instead of you, your phone being confiscated, as in you give it to the teacher and it's out of sight and you pick it up at the end of class or at the end of the day, do we like you yourself put the phone in the shoe tree? You can see it at all times that it's like there, so no one will take it, and that it's not going to break? Do we like that better?
I don't understand why we need to look at our phone that's powered off anyway.
No, it'll, you're not looking at it like, oh, I can message from there. Like, it's just there so you know it's not like getting messed up in the teacher's desk, is what I mean.
But yeah, we're not going to have teachers confiscating phones.
I think, I have two thoughts on that. One is, I don't know how many individual classrooms we have in our three middle schools and two high schools. But for the district to purchase a clear shoe tree for every single classroom, that is an expense that will add up because even if we get them at the dollar store, they're going to be expensive. And we just lost $2 million in grants, so I don't want to spend any dollars on anything right now.
So just, so I think we need to look at the policy right now. And then as we move forward, because there are some schools that have spent a lot of money on pouches. There's some schools that have done shoe boxes and everybody puts it in some. At the end of the day, it's forming habits, right? So how do we train ourselves to either shut it off or put it to a place as opposed to what's going to be the place we're going to put phones and fighting over those things? So, but I think to Mr. Poska's point is, if we're powering off, everyone's used to that. I'm going to treat you like a young adult, do the right thing, and then we're fine as opposed to, I'm going to give you a $70 Yanda pouch because I don't trust you.
Yeah, this shoe tree for me wasn't a way to put the phone away. It's, instead of the teacher taking the phone from you, you yourself are putting the phone on the desk, on the, I don't know, shoe tree, whatever you want to call it. Like, you're putting your phone yourself. That's what I care about more than what we use or how much we spend.
I think for me, at the end of the day, I would like these, when a student has to be separated from their phone, I think we should treat it the way we treat separating a student from other objects they're not supposed to have and have admin and a parent involved.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
All right, so we have on our policy, communication during school hours as the next bullet point. This, the policy for the New Hampshire School Board Association doesn't have it at all. I kind of like it because that's one of the big pieces of feedback I've been getting from parents who are nervous about it. Just a little reminder that, hey, the schools have phones. If you need your child or you need to tell them that there's a change in the pickup schedule, you can call the front office or the academy. I don't know that it really needs to be in there, I just like it. Anyone have thoughts on that?
No, that's fine. I was an administrator at a college in the 90s, and one of my responsibilities was to go and take a phone call that was received for a student to the classroom to notify them that their parent was looking for them and to come on down to the office and give them a call. So, you know, that's what it is basically. We have phones at the school. You can reach your child and your child can come and communicate you, you know, with you through the office.
Yes, right. And I think, I was trying to remember because I'm old. I think we had payphones in the high school when I was growing up. Like, there was a payphone. And we were not allowed to use the office phones. But I think the policy, if we follow this, is if you have, if you are a student and you need to call home during the day, you need to go to the front office or academy office or the nurse's office, whatever, you know.
Whatever administrative office.
Administrative office is determined by the school.
Yeah, I agree with the communication during school hours part. I like that a lot.
All right, so I think we add that in after consequences and violations. The school board has review. It says there should be, this should be reviewed with a report and recommendations to be delivered to the board no later than, I think I'm going to say the end of the school year. Is that acceptable instead of picking a date?
I would prefer that, yes.
All right, so we'll cross out that part. And then dissemination, this is part of the law. It says that it must be included in the student handbooks. We might have to do a rider this year, and we'll send something home. When Mr. Poska and I were talking about this, we also talked about like providing some other form of education, whether we, Nashville has a back-to-school night, maybe we have something available there for families. Maybe we do assemblies at the schools. But also, can we do some sort of, this is coming from me, can we do some other parent information? Open house, I don't know. There are lots of, you know, evening kind of things at the beginning of the school year.
I think we should also include something that gives the numbers for the schools so that people, you know, have those phone numbers on a sheet of paper and aren't looking online to try to figure out what the phone number is at the school.
Mr. Poska and I talked, again, this is how do we disseminate it? Working with the high school, working with high school students, with the PSAs. There just has to be mass communication blasting what's allowable and how to get in contact with the schools.
Yeah, so, but at a minimum, the policy, and the New Hampshire School Board Association policy includes that it must go to, into the handbooks and in the materials that get sent home at the beginning of the year. And then hopefully, we can do more. I know that the president bishop had been talking about, like, can we get the National Prevention Coalition involved? Because we know that not just the devices themselves are addictive, but certain apps are addictive. And I feel like it falls into their wheelhouse or maybe somebody else's. All right.
I like talking about this during freshman night. I think that's a really good place where we can talk about this, especially to new parents who might not know where to call the school or things like that. I also like open houses, assemblies. I even think an announcement at the start of the first day of school or maybe during E Block, a quick, you know, five-minute, every E Block teacher goes, and that's for the high schools, but every E Block teacher goes and talks to their kids about what they can do with or without their phones. I like that as well. As long as though every student knows what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do, and the consequences and violations for what they do if they do it.
Yep, agreed. All right, so based on that, my motion is to approve JICJ as amended this evening. And I wrote it down as we were doing it so that I can give that to the people who type this stuff up and move it to the full board.
Before we do that, I have two more questions.
Sure, we can still take a second and then take your questions.
Sorry, just real quick. In the high schools, we use MyFlex, and we talked about this ourselves. In the high schools, we use MyFlex to determine where we're going for E-Blocks so the teachers can pull you in and you know where you're going at all times. It's an app you have on your phone. How are we going to navigate around that since now we won't have any apps on our phone?
Right, there's also the SportsU and some of the other apps.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
Changes in athletic events.
And I think if I remember from the finance report, it's $12,000 a year from MyFlex.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's quite expensive.
Can you get it on the tablet?
That's what we, I was going to say, we would have to research if we can push the app onto Chromebook.
Okay. If not, can we break the lease and save $12,000?
I think, don't quote me on that. It might be something much less, maybe like $1,200, I don't know. I'll just check it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think ultimately the best way is.
That's an important note, did someone write it down?
Yep.
Do you still want a second, do you still want a second or do you want to read it again?
I do because I don't think that that changes whether or not we pass the policy.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Ms. Raymond, there was one other thing I just want to, I had a conversation with Jackie Lesser, who's the director of National Center for Lifelong Learning. And she was inquiring if this law pertains to the adult ed. I said I believed it did, based upon how it was written.
Adult education? Like those above 18?
Well, we have students who are over 18. I don't know. I can find, I mean, I can, I don't know.
I thought it was a good question. I think, you know, I think this, obviously, this has elicited a lot of conversation across the district. I thought it was a fair question. And I think, you know, I think when the intent of this policy was written, I don't think adult ed was at the top of everyone's mind. But I think it's something we just consider as we go forward. And again, I think there's also exceptions that we can put in there. But, and I know Ms. Lesser is concerned about some of her staff who are a little older and going back to get some, you know, high school credits, high school diploma, and might may have to be in contact with families.
Well, it's a bell-to-bell ban, right? Wouldn't adult ed fall outside of a bell-to-bell ban?
Wouldn't adult ed be from three to six at night?
So I would just, again, however the wording comes out. So remind us what the purpose of this policy is. It's not so much about can you have a cell phone or not. We want students, all students of any age, to be highly engaged in their learning, free from distraction, and reducing anxiety.
And does the state law even say anything?
So if that's by putting a cell phone away and adult ed accomplishes that, then so be it.
I feel like that's something we should just ask the attorneys at the School Boards Association for their interpretation and perhaps our attorney as well. But I agree, people should be engaged in learning. But I don't know, speaking as someone who did a non-traditional college route where I had to have my cell phone in case there was an emergency while I was in class, like, I get it. Because when you're in your mid-20s or 30s or you have children, it's a different, it's different than being 16. Because you are not, I don't know, because you're responsible for other people, not to other people at that point. So, yeah, I wish I had a better answer for her.
No, thank you. We'll follow, we'll do some more digging on that. But I just, she was unable to be here and I did say I would bring this up, but she was had some concerns.
I'll see what I can find out from, I don't think anyone thought of that question. It definitely didn't come up during any of the testimony on the bills. All right, so to move the cell phone policy forward to the full board for the next meeting with the changes that we discussed tonight. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so 3-0. So I also have a number of other bills, other policies. The School Board Association did a spring update, and then yesterday, they came out with a summer update. And there's probably 50 policies at this point that need to be updated with state law changes. I'm looking at the time and finance starts in 13 minutes. So I don't know that any of these are as time-critical as the cell phone policy. So I'm comfortable with bumping them to August unless there's something that Mr. Poska thinks we should get done in the next 10 minutes. Possibly the IFK, IKFG1? Because it's required by law. But I don't know how long of a discussion we need on that.
I think based upon our time limits, we're probably limited by what we can do at this point. I think as Ms. Raymond pointed, we have a number of policies that are going to be coming forward that fall under ED 306 that need to be updated. that are going to be coming forward that fall under Ed 306 that need to be updated. So I think we're going to be, we're not short of business for the next several policy meetings.
Right.
I'd say that.
And, and I, I think there's quite a bit of redlining in all of the ones that we have for tonight, so I'd like to give it a little bit of time to actually talk about it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Instead of trying to squish, start something in nine minutes and then have to leave for finance. Mr. Shaw?
Quick question on the phone. When will we have the full policy to read? And will we be able to make amendments when we have the full board meeting later this month?
Technically, yes. The board could do some wordsmithing because of the time crunch. Typically, we would send it back to policy. So technically, yes, changes could be made at the full board. And the meeting is on, hang on.
July 21st.
21st, which is Monday. So technically, we got to get stuff in by midday today to get it on the agenda for Monday, but I think we can do it. To get it on the agenda for Monday, by Thursday. That doesn't give her any time at all. So it would come out with the changes that we discussed Friday afternoon.
Awesome. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah? You think, are you planning on having this for Monday? Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Friday afternoon at like 5:00 PM.
And I'll connect with you if I have any more questions.
Yes, it gets posted to the website under board meeting minutes. And if you can't find it, email me and I will send it to you.
Awesome.
All right. So let's hold everything else until next time. Are we good on that?
Yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned at, I don't even know what time it is, 5:50.